This one. Tell us.
Sir, it is done before. It is done correctly. Let us see it.
Okay, you have left it.
Sir, three numbers.
Three numbers, okay. It is good. Okay, refer to the data below to answer the questions that follow. It is a straight graphic question. It is obviously first item. It is done?
Yes, sir.
It is not new?
It is not new.
Okay.
I have spent a lot of time on it.
Do you know? So, graphic question. Graphic question, if you spend time on it, you will practice. Graphic question, if you spend a lot of time on it, you will do it. Okay, next, six races. Uh. In a race, at a kilometer long, they all drive at different speeds, finish the race at different time. Then we will see how much time it takes, how much speed it takes, that will be the result. Right? So, this one, it is done? Hello?
Yes, sir, it is done.
It is done?
No, no.
Contact is. Contact is.
Eight items.
Eight, okay. Data of students. What percentage of students failed in, failed more in ninety-one than in ninety-nine? Act out the students admitted. Students in each class newly admitted. Okay, here we will see two tables, then we will join them. Right?
Yes, sir. In detail, I have seen.
It is obviously time, it is not good. If you choose a question, you will choose it. How much data, there are hundred, there are hundred data points, hundred plus hundred, two hundred. Right? Now, if you replace the number of students in a year is number of students in X minus, uh. In standard, X minus one in year Y plus one plus. If you do it, you will calculate it differently. Obviously, this will take more time.
Sir, first item is done, it is time spent, you will not do it.
You have done it many times, I have done it many times. It is.
It is. Graphic. Meaning, data, TI, it is a little bit.
But TI, meaning this type of TI, it will take long time. However, it starts with table, however, one hundred value, you will spend one second, one hundred second time. And here you will replace it. Why should you attempt this question in the first place? It is, it is, it is not tried, so you are finished. You have seen the rest, there is a question? Survey was conducted in a school to find out what students bring in their dabbah for snacks. Each student brings only one type of food. The survey built following Venn diagram. Okay, terminate a Venn diagram. Sixteen, seventeen. So, completed place. Each player played the other player once. Then we have a roster player. Then we will play each player nine matches, so ten into nine by two forty-five matches. Now. Four, eight, seven, eight. Now, calculate it. So, it is not, this is also going to take time. Uh. Two sons, one daughter.
It is done.
Okay. Twenty-four, fifty. We are going to small block, small floor, small profession, six into six into six. Okay. So, this one is, but easy contact, now let's find out.
Sir, now it is done, it is.
First one is easy.
Yeah.
Second one is easy.
It is done.
Third one is difficult. Fourth one, easy. Fifth one, difficult. This one, medium difficulty. This one, medium difficulty. And this one is. Then we will pick first, second and last. I will start off with one. Okay. Here we have a straight graph. Here we have said, survey was conducted. In different areas of three cities, following scatter. Uh, plot shows the data for number of buildings and the average size of a family. Now, the average size of a family is on X axis, number of buildings is on Y axis. But question is, number, average number of people per building is sixty-one, thirty-six, thirty-two, twenty-four for various areas in Chennai. Consider the areas by increasing order of number of buildings in Chennai with respect to the above values. So, sixty-one is for the lowest and twenty-four is for the highest. Uh, in terms of number of order of buildings, the average family size in the survey area of Chennai. So, Chennai is the rounds. So, at two, three, four. So, first one is at around eighteen. Three, four. Four, five, no, four is done. Then sixteen. So, average size is. Uh, average size is six. Average size is six or number of buildings is sixteen. Our average number of people is sixty-one. Average number of people per building is sixty-one. Now, how many building is sixteen? So, sixty-one into sixteen is the total. Then it will be thirty-six into. Uh. Ninety-two. Thirty-six into ninety-two. Then it will be one fifty-six into thirty-two. Then it will be. One, two, three. Uh, one eighty-eight into twenty-four. This will be the total number of people. Uh. Divided by. That the family size. Now, average family size is. Here we have six. Into number of families is. Sorry, number of. Uh. People is six number of people per building. Then sixteen-one into. Sixteen is the total number of people. Are. Our average family size is six. So, that means sixty-one into sixteen is the total. Our average is six, similarly thirty-six into ninety-two is the total. Our average is three and a half, three and a half. Then. One sixty into the one sixteen, it is one fifty-six into thirty-two is the average, is the total. Our average is three point two five. Are twenty-four into one eighty-eight is the total. Our average is two point. Four. So, that means these three are weighted average. So, this, this will be time consuming, number one. Okay? So, I will then go to five.
Sir, often companies, it is easy to do. Do it as usual.
But, father, you have to read the question and understand why it takes a lot of time. That is what you have to be, you have to master. Now, next I will go to the second one. I have seen the first one, it takes a lot of time. I will straight away go to the second one. Now, I, I go with this. Here we have said, small racer, which is small D, S, G, T, P, A, B, C, D, F, G. T, S, G, T, N, P, A and L. This is small. Our race course is seven two zero zero. They drive at different speeds, take different times, both are integers. Following is known about them after finishing the race. He finishes first in sixty hours. So, that means. Time, speed or time. Then we will, he finishes in sixty hours, when it speed is. Seven thousand two hundred by sixty. Which is?
Twelve, twelve, one twenty.
One twenty. G finishes last in one forty-four hours. So, G is last in one forty-four hours. Then we have seven twenty by one forty-four. Seven two zero zero by one forty-four is the. Speed, so twelve, six hundred, twelve, fifty.
Fifty.
So, fifty is the speed. S, beat L. Now, S is greater than L. This speed is greater than L. T finishes the race four hours before A. T is, T time is, A minus four. Person finishing third travels at ninety-six, so he is last. And person finishing. Third will drive at ninety-six. Then we have nine, seven two zero zero by ninety-six will be twelve, eight, twelve, six hundred. And eight, seven, five. So, seventy-five and ninety-six is the combination for. Uh. So, if, if I assume that A is this, then if A's time is nine, sorry, A's time is seventy-five. Right? A's time is seventy-five. Then we have D's time is seventy-one, so D's speed will not be an integer, so A cannot be seventy-five. So, this, this is ruled out. Next, L R S. If L is seventy-five, right? So, uh. Speed is ninety-six, so he is third. If this is the, if this is my assumption, then S.
Second.
S is second. Right? Second or fast, I don't know. S is second. Then we have.
No, first, sir, it is done, first, it is done. Finishes first, P to finish, finishes first.
Oh, yeah, P to first, correct. So, S will be second. So. And then we have third is A, then we have fourth or fifth is A and D. And J is taking less time, so D will be fourth. And A will be fifth. Right? Correct?
That's it.
Right? But A cannot be fifth because. This is last, so first, second, third. Uh, if it is third, then fourth. A cannot be four. Oh, sorry. Now, it is done, four, five, six, so last, last one is six, correct, yeah, it is done. So, A is fifth. Now, we will see. Here we have A or A minus four, A two is how much value is that, both are integers. Right? And A has to be, uh, fifth, then we have less than one forty-four. Are. One forty-four is less, then we have one thirty-six, seven two, seven two zero zero by one thirty-six, one forty-four, no. One forty-four minus twelve, one thirty-two, if I am, then it will not be an integer. The one thirty, it is one twenty me. Then this becomes. Six, sixty. So. One twenty and sixty would be a combination, then it will be one hundred sixteen, one hundred sixteen is not. Uh. Then the value will be one hundred twenty minus twelve hundred eight, hundred eight or hundred four. Hundred eight, hundred four is not. Then we have ninety-six and ninety-two. Then it will be eighty-four or eighty. Eighty-four or eighty. Then it will be seventy-two or sixty-eight. Eighty-four or eighty. So, eighty-four, seven two zero zero by eighty-four, twelve, seven, no, it is not. Ninety-six. Seven two zero zero by ninety-six. Or ninety-two. Ninety-six is divisible, seven two zero zero by ninety-two. Forty, no, it is not. Ninety-six, ninety-two combination, no, one hundred ninety-six, it is. Seven two zero zero by one hundred is seventy-two. If it is one hundred high, it is ninety-six, then this is coming out. So, this will be seventy-two and seventy-two by ninety-six will be eight, twelve. Yeah, six hundred seventy-five, ninety-six seventy-five. So. Then we have eight of four, it is, it is fourth, it is fifth, it is third, it is second is. Then it is between sixty and. Sixty and seventy-five. The sixty and seventy-five.
Seventy-two, seventy-two.
There is, others will get it. Sixty or seventy-five, there is a value, it is seventy-two, seven two zero zero divided. Sixty.
Sir, seventy, seventy-two is.
Seventy-two, yes. Seventy-two is the right one. Or, or what value is? Seventy-five or sixty, there is a, seventy-two, so this will be the table. Right? So, it is much easier. Because here we have two. Two, twelve. Right? Speed of S. The key combination is signal.
Okay.
Seventy-two. S, chat option is nineteen ninety-six hundred, hundred eight.
Hundred is. Speed of is hundred is. Time taken.
Oh, speed of. Seven, right? Hundred, correct. What distance did lazy L beat G? L beat G. What? Distance did L beat C. L is. Uh. P is ninety-six, G is fifty. So. Uh, seventy-five. Distance is. Then we have. When L, L finishes the race. Uh, that is in seventy-five hours, seventy-five into fifty. So, three, seven, five, zero. Three, seven, five, zero. By how much time did P beat A? P beat A time. P. Beat A. Sixty or hundred forty. Two, two, four, in the race. One, two, three, four, 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 P. Okay, now you go straight to the last one. So. Following grid has to be filled with three types of shapes. Each row and each column should have exactly two types of each shape. The rows are numbered one to six, columns one to six, condition. Users follows, then we have basically thirty-six. Grided table. Then we have one, two, three, four, five, small value is. Then we have to find out thirty. No two adjacent squares contain the same shape. Row one. Okay, row two, the leftmost delta is to the right of the rightmost O. Leftmost delta is to the, then we have row two is. Delta and O. Okay? Because it is said that. Each. Each row and each column should have exactly two types of. Each shape. Morning. I have said. Ah. Rows are numbered, uh, sorry. Two types of shape. Row three will be the rhombus. Each rhombus is next to the right of each O. Then row three will be. Oh, it is across here. So, this row. Each rhombus is next to the right of each. Those are numbered from. Top to bottom, columns left to right. So, row three. Row three is a triangle, why is it?
Sir, they said, do it. No two adjacent squares contain the same shape. So, for that, one of them is.
Okay, it is. No, here we have, the condition is violet. Here we say, each row and each column should have exactly two types of each shape. Oh, two types of each shape, okay, okay, okay. Then we will do it. I have, I have seen it. So, each delta, each rhombus is next to. Uh, each rhombus is next and to the right of each O.
Sir, then it will be, the third row will be. Then first position is a triangle. Then it will be a rhombus, then it will be. Because exactly, you will understand.
Ah, each rhombus is to the right of each O.
Then first, a triangle will be.
Triangle, rhombus, O. Now, triangle, O, rhombus, rhombus.
Each rhombus is next to the right, huh?
O, rhombus. Okay. Then it will be. Then it will be. Then it will be.
Two columns, then we have second column, then we have two. Then we have two rhombus or two square. Then we have column two.
One second. To be shown. Oh, row table says, no two adjacent squares contain same shape, not in columns. So, this is. Third row, fourth row each.
Sir, column count, column count, if you want to remember, not the problem.
Row to one, two, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, four, five, six. It is standard, it is a problem, it is standard.
So, basically, two counts. Row wise column counts.
Then, row wise column is. Here we have said. Now, the column is. Okay.
Sir, row, row three is. Then we have column two, two. Then we have column two, information check.
Column two is both O's are somewhere between deltas. Between the rhombuses. Okay? Then it is.
Then we have a rhombus. Between two rhombuses. Then we have R one, C two, it is a rhombus.
Okay. Uh, row, row to the leftmost delta is to the right of the rightmost O. Leftmost delta is to the right of the rightmost O. Then we have leftmost delta. It will be to the right of the rightmost O, it will be. It is possible. No, the delta is here.
Sir, row six information, they said O's are next to each other. This time, we can understand three, four. Row six.
Row four is. Each delta is next to. Is next to the left of each O. Left of each O, then here it is. Row four. And row five, rightmost delta is to the. Left of the leftmost O. Rightmost. Delta. Or not?
Sir, row four is information, each triangle is next to the left of it. It is not. It is a rhombus. Row four is each triangle.
Yes, 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 the row five, the rightmost delta. Is to the left of the leftmost O. Rightmost delta. Is to the left of leftmost O. Row six, O's are next to each other.
I mean, three or four.
Three or four is possible.
Two can understand, because two already have two O's. No two columns, as you said, that one column or two, two of them can stay.
Then, here is possible, one hundred. Or more, correct. So, here we have two, now let us go to.
Column three information.
Column three.
Ah, sir. The topmost O is.
Topmost O is lower than the bottommost rhombus.
Then, R four, C three, there is another one.
Yes, sir. Sir, bottom most. Topmost O. Is lower than the bottommost delta. Then.
R four, C three. It is a circle.
Topmost O, lower than the bottommost delta. Ah, here another one, rhombus, here, delta. Then it is. Column four.
Two, two of them. No two adjacent square contain the same shape. Then, R two, R two, C three, can understand another one, rhombus. However, delta can understand. Third position, huh?
Then, here the delta.
Here rhombus.
Here rhombus. Okay, then it is. Two, column three.
This time, this time, R four, this time, R four, one of them. R four is said, each triangle is next to the left of each O. So, one of them, then it is rhombus, triangle O.
Each delta is next to the left of each O. Then, here is a triangle. Now, now we go to column two. Both O's are somewhere between deltas. Between, between the rhombuses. Then, rhombus, rhombus. These two are rhombus. One of the delta, then I mean, five, I say, five. Rightmost delta is to the left of the leftmost O. The left of the. Leftmost O. Then, rightmost delta is here, leftmost O is here.
Sir, C five is similar shapes are adjacent to each other. C five, then you can do it.
Then, similar shapes are adjacent to each other. Do you want to do?
Five. Adjust. It is rhombus, it is, its above a circle, its above a triangle.
Okay.
This is. Yes. First. Here is rhombus.
Here is rhombus.
And first, a circle.
Here is. Right. So, then, second is leftmost delta.
Sir, R four is completed, two circles, a triangle is. Rhombus.
Each delta is to the next. Is to the left of each O, delta. Left of O, delta.
It is rhombus.
Then, it is one, two, three, four. It is. Then.
Rhombus is, I mean, it is a triangle. C six, R two. Or zero is possible, triangle is possible, circle is possible.
One minute. This time. Four points are left.
Yes, it is, sir, C six, R two, C six, R two, it is. Triangle, because they said both rhombuses are somewhere between O's.
Ah. Yes, sir. It is a triangle. Column two is said.
Column, column, they said, both rhombuses are somewhere between O's.
Somewhere between O's, then, I mean. O is.
Five is. Five is. O is five.
Triangle, it is a triangle. No, it is a triangle, it is.
A circle. And sir, R five can understand, R five, C six can understand circle. Then, because row six, two O's already is, another one, three is.
It is O. Triangle. Then. Two O. Here. Column, yeah, what? Column one, each delta. Each rhombus is below each delta. Each rhombus is below each delta.
The delta.
Delta, here is rhombus. Then.
That is a triangle.
Triangle. It is a rhombus.
It is a triangle.
It is a triangle. So. This one was also much easier than the others. This one. Now you can find the number of deltas in the main diagonal. From the. Top left corner to the bottom right corner of the grid. Then, add two. Two. Okay, so this is done. Okay, next. Now, it is a calculation. Then, four, five, six, seven, nine. It is a calculation. Then, it is. Another one. It is, it is. It is a calculation.
Another one, six into six into six. Little floor is, little is profession.
It is three.
Three into six, eighteen.
Or. How to say? Or identify the, with the, I mean, eighteen into. Whatever. Okay, another one. Twenty five. So, twenty five times is available first. Picture is. T twenty, it is basically T twenty study. After strategy, I have not, I have, I have, I have, peace is behaving differently, then you have to adapt. Pressman is correct, first three are. And here, back, 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 so obviously, then the strategy has to change. Then, when it is out. So, this is the same student. Okay. Here is. Nationalities, A, B, F, G, I, S. A, B, F, G, I, S. First to sixth floor, profession is S, F. D, D. Now, B is, B is F, T, G, B. One of the sportsmen occupy the sixth floor. Then, sportsman. Man, what is it? Football, tennis, golf. It is six floor. Brazilian stays between the banker and the golfer. Then, Brazilian stays between the bankers and the golfer. Spaniard stays. Two floors below German. Spaniard is G minus two. Football players stays on the fourth floor. So, football player on the fourth floor. American is not a businessman. American is not a businessman. Does not occupy the sixth or the first floor. Not six, not first. Italian and banker have only one person deciding between them. And that person, the sportsman. Italian and the banker. Then, Italian banker is there. Actor, sports person. Men. A sportsman above and below him. So. Sports. Sports.
Due to sportsman, French is not. Banker, Italian is not.
Then, it is a professional start. Professional actor is. Then, B, S, F. T, G, P. F is on fourth floor. This time. Footballers. Footballer. Footballer is on fourth floor.
Now, sportsman, the Frenchman has sportsman ever been below him.
So, the Frenchman has sportsman above and below him. So, that sportsman can be tennis and golf.
Okay, three is.
Italian and banker have only one person deciding between them, that person is not a sportsman. So. Frenchman has a sportsman ever been below him. Spaniard stays two floors below the German. So, the footballer. So. And he stays. Stays on the. Then. So, the American is not a business. And six, now, I mean, second, third, fourth, fifth. Then, fourth, second, third or fifth. American is. No, fourth is possible. Second, third, fourth, it is not a banker, footballer is possible, second, third, fourth, fifth, possible. Now, the banker. Has to be. Now, Brazilian. Between banker and golfer. Banker and golfer. Then, it is not. Football players. American is not a businessman. Italian and banker have one person between them. That is not a sportsman. Italian and banker. Frenchman has a sportsman above and below him. Then, Frenchman. If I am Dhoni footballer, is one of them, then the Frenchman. Can be in third. He, he, Frenchman cannot be in fifth. Then, fifth is. Sportsman is. It is open, two is sportsman, so he cannot be fifth. He cannot be fourth. So, he can be. Third. Or second. Third or second. Now. S is G minus two. So. Spaniards. Below the German. Then, German, if it is six, Spanish fourth. So. That can be a possibility, Spanish fourth. Um. Okay, let us. Put some assumptions here. It is a profession. Country. By assume that. The Spaniard is the footballer. Then, German will be on the sixth floor. So, German will be on the sixth floor. Then. Ah. Then. Banker and golfer. Spaniard stays two floors below the. American is not a businessman, ever. German is in sixth floor. American. Is not four, so American is two, three or five. So, American has to be five, because the Frenchman has to be three or two. So, the American has to be five. And. In five. It can be. It is not a banker, then, American profession is. Banker, no, footballer, no. American is in five. Then, three sports person is not. B, F, G is. If. FTG is not. एफटीजी हो चुना तो दे बैंकर नहीं अमेरिकन इस नॉट अन बिजनेसमैन ताले बी ए बी तो हो गए ना ताले इट कैन बी अन बैंकर और एफटीजी बात दी एस होते टॉप शेयर ब्रोकर तो अमेरिकन कैन बी अन बैंकर और अन शेयर ब्रोकर सो इफ इस ऑन डी फिफth फ्लोर ताले अमेरिकन भी नॉट बैंकर धोरी तुम्हें बैंकर इस ऑन फिफth विच इस अन अमेरिकन ना डी ब्रजिलियन स्टेज बिटवीन डी बैंकर एंड डी गॉल्फर तमने ब्रजिलियन हैव टू कम तो बिटवीन डी बैंकर एंड डी गॉल्फर तुम्हें ब्रजिलियन हैव टू बी फोर्थ विच इस नॉट डी केस तो दिस कैन नॉट बी डी केस दें तो इफ डी बैंकर इफ डी अमेरिकन इस डी शेयर ब्रोकर एंड इस ऑन डी फिफth फ्लोर फिफth फ्लोर अमेरिकन ताले ताले फुटबॉलर इस ऑन फोर्थ और वो इसे टेनिस और गॉल्फर टेनिस और गॉल्फर कैन बी फर्स्ट सेकंड थर्ड फर्स्ट सेकंड थर्ड तो तमने सिक्स तो हो गए आइदर बिजनेसमैन और बैंकर बिजनेसमैन और बैंकर सिक्स तो डी फर्स्ट फ्लोर तो सिक्स तो डी फर्स्ट फिफth अच्छे अमेरिकन इटालियन एंड बैंकर हैव वैन पर्सन बिटवीन दें एंड डेट पर्सन इस नॉट अन स्पोर्ट्समैन तो डेट पर्सन इस डी स्पोर्ट्समैन तमने इटालियन जो दी इट फोर्थ दे अच्छे तमने इटालियन जो दी थर्ड है अन बैंकर जो दी फिफth तो अच्छे ना बैंकर थर्ड इटालियन फिफth तो अच्छे ना ताले इटालियन ताले फिफth तमने हो गए ना इस इन टीबी एस इस डी शेयर ब्रोकर ब्रोकर इफ दिस इस शेयर ब्रोकर एंड इटालियन बैंकर हैव डी फुटबॉलर इन बिटवीन दें ताले इटालियन जो दी फिफth तो बैंकर इस थर्ड एंड अमेरिकन इस नॉट अन बिजनेसमैन डज नॉट अन बिजनेसमैन तो दिस इस डी अमेरिकन सो दें एफ इस डी फ्रेंचमैन स्पोर्ट्समैन अबाव एंड बिलो हिम तो ही इस थर्ड फोर्थ फिफth तो तो फिफth हैव टू बी फोर्थ थर्ड एंड सेकंड सेकंड हैव टू बी अन स्पोर्ट्समैन थर्ड हैव टू बी फ्रेंचमैन तो थर्ड विल नॉट बी अन अमेरिकन थर्ड विल बी अन फ्रेंच सेकंड विल बी सेकंड विल बी अन फ्रेंचमैन इस थर्ड और इस फुटबॉलर नीचे हैव टू बी वैन ऑफ दीज तू सो दें डी इटालियन एंड डी बैंकर हैव वैन पर्सन बिटवीन दें तो इटालियन हैव टू बी इन नंबर वैन एंड नंबर तू विल बी अनदर स्पोर्ट्समैन तमने नंबर तू विल बी अन स्पोर्ट्समैन इटालियन विल बी वैन तर्क ये इटालियन इस कम इस फाइव सो डेट इस नॉट पॉसिबल ना एट आउट इस टेकिंग टाइम इस अलसो टेकिंग अन नॉट ऑफ
ओई शैडोर एक्टर चले सर डोटा मुझे एक कॉन्स्टिब्यूल अपडेट
उन्हें
एक्टर शैडोर क्वेश्चन चला ना ओई सार्कल दिए किसी टा सेमी सार्कल्स मिले मिले
तो ग्रीन डायग्राम
हाय ग्रीन डायग्राम
इट्स कुरंत ब्रिंक्स ओनली वैन टाइप ऑफ फूड ग्रीन डायग्राम और अक्सर एक्सैक्टली तू टाइप्स ऑफ फूड एप्पल्स आइदर लाइट ग्रे रीजन फ्रूट सर्कल एंड ओरिंग्स व्हाइट रीजन इन डी फ्रूट सर्कल दिस इस एप्पल्स दिस इस ओरिंग्स इट कैन ब्रिंग तू टाइप्स ऑफ ब्रेड एक्स एक लाइट ग्रे रीजन एंड बिस्किट्स व्हाइट रीजन स्टूडेंट्स ब्रिंग एप्पल फ्लेवर बिस्किट्स वर्टिकल लाइंस दिस इस एप्पल फ्लेवर बिस्किट्स दिस इस ए बी तुम विल ब्रिंग एप्पल फ्लेवर्ड केक्स प्रेजेंटेड बाय डी डार्क ग्रे दिस इस एस ओरिंग्स फ्लेवर बिस्किट्स व्हाइट ओ बी एंड ओरिंग्स फ्लेवर टू केक्स ओरिंग्स फ्लेवर केक्स ओरिजिनल लाइंस ओ सी 29 स्टूडेंट्स ब्रोट एप्पल सो डेट उसे यू हैव टू मेक डी चार्ट लाइक दिस एप्पल्स एंड ओरिंग्स एंड तो एप्पल्स एंड ओरिंग्स ओनली एप्पल्स एप्पल्स प्लस बिस्किट्स एप्पल्स प्लस एक्स एकदम मिला होते टोटल एप्पल्स और तो होते ओनली ओरिंग्स ओरिंग्स ओनली ओरिंग्स ओरिंग्स बिस्किट्स ओरिंग्स केक्स सो 29 ब्रोट एप्पल आइदर डी फूड और डी फ्लेवर्ड ब्रेड तो एप्पल 29 फूड और फ्लेवर्ड ब्रेड एप्पल्स एस फूड और फ्लेवर्ड ब्रेड तो तो इफ दिस इस एक्स दिस इस 29 माइनस एक्स 42 ब्रोट ओरिंग्स 42 ब्रोट ओरिंग्स दिस इस व्हाय दिस इस ओरिंग्स फ्लेवर्ड ब्रेड 42 माइनस व्हाय 32 ब्रोट केक्स 34 ब्रोट बिस्किट्स तमने केक्स होते 32 तो विच मींस एक्स होते 32 माइन ओ सी एस सी आर सी इतनी ते मिले 32 तमने ओ सी आर एस सी एजुरिया मीटर से ए और बी धोरी तमने एक्स विल बी 32 माइनस ए माइनस बी 34 ब्रोट बिस्किट्स ताले बिस्किट्स की जो दिया नहीं बिस्किट्स अच्छे ए बी ओ बी बी मिले 34 ए बी ओ बी बी मिले 34 ए बी इस 29 माइनस एक्स 42 माइनस व्हाय ए बी ओ बी बी सो बी विल बी 34 माइनस 26 तुम देख एक्स धोरी 29 माइनस एक्स ये डी व्हाय 42 माइनस व्हाय 34 माइनस एक्स प्लस व्हाय इस बी नंबर ऑफ स्टूडेंट्स ब्रोट एप्पल फ्लेवर्ड केक्स एस सी वास वैन थर्ड ऑफ ए एस सी इस वैन थर्ड ए सो एस सी इस अब इस दिस ए इस वैन थर्ड ऑफ डी टोटल बी इस वैन थर्ड ऑफ तो ऑफ दोस्त ब्रोट एप्पल एस डी फूड एप्पल एस डी फूड इस 29 माइनस एक्स इस 29 माइनस एक्स 34 ब्रोट ओनली फूड 29 ब्रोट ओनली ब्रेड तमने ओनली फूड इस 29 माइनस एक्स 42 माइनस व्हाय 29 माइनस एक्स प्लस 42 माइनस व्हाय इस 34 एंड ओनली ब्रेड मींस बी प्लस सी तो दिस प्लस दिस इस 29
इट तो असर सोमाई लिखे जाए इट आउट तातरी नहीं
2 माइनस ए माइनस बी तातरी जो कुछ नहीं नहीं अच्छे एक्स्ट्रा तो टाइम लगे अमित बोला तो छोटा था अगले दूं तो इसी था बे एक्टर मीडियम और दूं तो डिफिकल्ट राइट दूं तो की तीन ते डिफिकल्ट तो डिफिकल्ट नो टाइम बेची लगे सो डेट इस वाय डी टारगेट इस तू तू तीन दूं नवती यह आउट आउट यू हैव टू ट्राई तू तुम विनिम्य नवती यह आउट डेट शुड बी डी टारगेट तो बी प्लस सी इस 32 माइनस ए माइनस बी माइनस 32 माइनस ए माइनस बी प्लस 34 माइनस एक्स माइनस व्हाय इस 29 नंबर ऑफ स्टूडेंट्स ब्रोट एप्पल फ्लेवर्ड ब्रेड तमने ए बी इस इक्वल तू डी नंबर ऑफ स्टूडेंट्स ब्रोट ओरिंग्स फ्लेवर्ड केक ओ सी इस इक्वल तू ए बी तो ओ सी ए बी इस एक्स ओ सी इस बी एक्स इस इक्वल तू बी तो एक्स इस इक्वल तू बी तो दिस इस वैन तू बी फोर एंड फाइव तो आई हैव एक्स व्हाय ए बी चार्ट दे अच्छा है वो सो आई नीड फोर इक्वेशन तो एक्स इक्वल तू बी ये शुरू करो एक्स इक्वल तू बी तमने एक्स इक्वल तू बी आई विल पुट इट इन इक्वेशन तू सो 32 प्लस 34 इस 66 माइनस ए माइनस बी माइनस एक्स माइनस तू बी माइनस व्हाय इस इक्वल तू 29 तमने ए प्लस तू बी प्लस व्हाय इस 66 माइनस 29 विच इस 37 तो ए बी व्हाय दिए एक्टर इक्वेशन हो लो अच्छा इतना अच्छे एक्स एक्स माने बी तो बी प्लस व्हाय तक ये देखिए नहीं जाऊं सो बी प्लस व्हाय विल बी 29 प्लस 42 माइनस 34 22 प्लस 29 प्लस 42 माइनस 34 इस 8 29 प्लस 8 इस 37 तो डेट मींस तो ये वर्ड ये तो बी 0 चले आज बी प्लस व्हाय इस बी प्लस व्हाय 29 प्लस 42 माइनस 34 इस 8 29 प्लस 8 इस 37 और इट तो वास तो 66 माइनस 29 विच इस 37 ओके तुम्हें एक तो इक्वेशन देखा मैं पाच सी बी प्लस व्हाय इस 37 सो ए प्लस बी इस 0 डेट मींस ए प्लस बी 0 ओके इतना देखा मैं पाच सी बी इस, दिस ए इस ए 3 ए प्लस बी इस 29 3 ए प्लस बी इस 29 अ एक्स इक्वल तू बी, तरमणे बी प्लस वाई इस 37 तरमणे बी इस इक्वल 3 ए प्लस बी इस 29 सो 29 ब्रोट अप्पल 34 ब्रोट ओनली फूट 29 माइनस एक्स प्लस 42 माइनस वाई 29 34 बी ब्रेड बी प्लस बी इस 32 माइनस ए माइनस बी माइनस ए माइनस बी इस बी ब्रोट केक्स अप्पल फ्लिवर ए, ओरिंग्स फ्लिवर बी ताले 32 माइनस ए माइनस बी ओनली केक्स 34 माइनस एक्स माइनस वाई इस ओनली बी सो ओनली ब्रेड वुड बी डी सम ऑफ़ दिस 32 प्लस 66, 37 इस ए प्लस तू बी प्लस वाई 3 ए प्लस बी इस 29 इस अस्ट्रक्ट वाई 6 ए प्लस बी इस 58, तो एकदम माइनस खुले 67 माइनस ए 5 ए माइनस वाई इस 58 माइनस 37 21 अ तरमणे वाई इस 5 ए माइनस 21 डेट इस इक्वल तू 37 माइनस बी तरमणे 5 ए प्लस बी 8 ए प्लस बी इस बी शमत तो बते अल्पनशन अपनी बोझ एक्स इस इक्वल तू बी इस इक्वल तू बी स्टूडेंट्स ब्रोट अप्पल फ्लिवर ब्रेड इक्वल तू डी नंबर ओरिंग्स केक्स, अप्पल ब्रेड, ओरिंग्स केक्स अप्पल ब्रेड इस एक्स ओरिंग्स केक्स इस बी सो एक्स इस इक्वल तू बी चाक्ते इक्वेशन, चाक्ते अनु एन तुझे आउचे बी ए प्लस एक्स इक्वल्स 29 एक्स प्लस वाई इक्वल्स 37 तरपता हो चे ए प्लस बी प्लस एक्स प्लस वाई इस 37 बत्से एक्स इक्वल तू बी तब तक अब दर हो चे, एक्स प्लस वाई 37 ए प्लस बी जीरो बस बी जीरो 29 ब्रोट अप्पल आइडर अस फूट और अस फ्लिवर ब्रेड सो इफ़ आई कॉल्स दिस अस एक्स सो एक्स प्लस डी फूट विल बी 29, सो दिस विल बी 29 माइनस एक्स हम 42 ब्रोट ओरिंग्स, सिमिलरली 42 ब्रोट ओरिंग्स एक बटर मणि इस इट फूट प्लस फ्लिवर ब्रेड तो दिस ताई है तरमणे ओरिंग्स प्लस ओरिंग्स फ्लिवर ब्रेड विल बी 42, तरमणे दिस इस वाई दिस इस 42 माइनस वाई टोटल 32 ब्रोट केक्स तरमणे केक प्लस एसी प्लस ओसी विल बी 32 सो एसी जो दिस ए है ओसी जो दिस बी है, दिस विल बी 32 माइनस ए प्लस बी 34 ब्रोट बिस्किट्स तरमणे एबी प्लस ओबी प्लस बिस्किट्स इस 34, सो दिस विल बी 34 माइनस एक्स प्लस वाई नंबर ऑफ़ स्टूडेंट्स वो ब्रोट अप्पल फ्लिवर केक वास वैन थर्ड ऑफ़ डी नंबर ऑफ़ स्टूडेंट्स वो अप्लाइड ऑफ़ फूट अप्पल फ्लिवर केक इस ए इस वैन थर्ड ऑफ़ 29 माइनस एक्स सो दिस अ 34 ब्रोट ओनली फूट तरमणे दिस प्लस दिस इस 34 सो 29 माइनस एक्स प्लस 42 माइनस वाई इस 34 डेट मींस एक्स प्लस वाई इस 37 29 ब्रोट ओनली ब्रेड तरमणे बी प्लस 34 माइनस एक्स माइनस वाई प्लस 32 माइनस ए माइनस बी इस 29 सो ए प्लस बी प्लस एक्स प्लस वाई इस 37 नंबर ऑफ़ स्टूडेंट्स वो ब्रोट अप्पल फ्लिवर ब्रेड विच इस एक्स इस इक्वल तू डी नंबर ऑफ़ वो ब्रोट ओरिंग्स फ्लिवर केक इस इक्वल तू बी इक्वेशन तो किकी आच उन प्रेताने बोन्नो बोलो चे, एक्स प्लस वाई जो दिस 37 है ताले ए प्लस बी इक्वल तू जीरो चुने आच विच कैन नॉट बी डी केस
हम
विच कैन नॉट बी डी केस
ठीक
ताले इक्वेशन तो इटाई हो नहीं द लेट्स सी ड ड ये ते ड व्यू ते अच्छा देखा ना, 33
फिफ्थ जीरो तू वैन सिक्स नाइंग जीरो मण इधर साइट ऐसे प्रचंडो स्लो, खुलती जाना प्रचुष्माई लगाय
साइट तो बिल डेवलप
है मणे देखती अमि आगे दिन मोक्ता जन्नत खुल्लम शिकुरे ही जाचे, गुरे ही जाचे प्रचुष्माई लगाय
नॉल बॉस लाइव लर
इटाना आह्चन, नीचे 60 मिनट्स एग्जाम बोले आच्छे एक्टा कैट मोक्ते एई बांधी के सर, लेफ्टे सेक्शनलेट तोराय
एक्टा ही तो खुल्लम देखो इटाई खुल्लम
नहीं इटा कुड़ी, नीटा काल के कुड़े छलम आज उठा चे डीआईएलए रे 60 मिनट टेस्ट, इग्लो 40 मिनट हाय इजे इटा, इजे कैट सेक्शन टेस्ट 60 मिनट्स फॉर्मैट
ओ
इटाते पांच नंबर ता, डीआईएलए रे पांच
इटा यस अपना मुझे ये ना वाई वन अमि जो ना इटाके एक्स सो इटा एक्स और एक्टा की धोरी छे
एक्स धोरी पूर्ण एक कुड़े गया छे
टाके एक्स धोरी छे, ओके ओके 150 टाके 29, ओ इटाके 150, इटाके 3X कोरी छे अच्छा, निकास वैन थर्ड ऑफ़ दिस तरमणे इटा तीन टाइम्स रेक सो दिस प्लस दिस इस 29 29 माइनस 3X, ओ अच्छा एक्टा प्लस एटा के 29 धोरी छे, अमि एटा प्लस एटा के 29 धोरी छे
हम
एटा प्लस एटा 29, एटा प्लस एटा 29 माने ओसी प्लस ए इस 29, ताई की बोल्चे
29 माइनस एक्स प्लस बी तरमणे
एक मिनट एकाने बोल्चे 29 ब्रोट अप्पल आइडर अस फूट और फ्लिवर ब्रेड राइट, अप्पल माने एबी राइट
हम
अप्पल ब्रेड माने एबी अब अ प्रेजेंटेशन ता की बोले छे अप्पल फ्लिवर बिस्किट्स वर्टिकल लाइंस अप्पल फ्लिवर बिस्किट्स माने वर्टिकल लाइंस ताले अप्पल फ्लिवर ब्रेड होले वर्टिकल लाइंस अबे तरन हॉरिजॉन्टल लाइंस छेटा छेटा, ओरिंग्स फ्लिवर केक्स राइट रेक
हम
हॉरिजॉन्टल लाइंस छेटा छेटा, ओरिंग्स फ्लिवर केक्स